All right, so we after, as Joe said, something that does not happen very often in these BLS services out here in the rural sites is a baby being born in the back of the ambulance. So off record for as far as dates and stuff, but a couple of weeks ago, we had a patient that was transferred from Melrose to St. Cloud. We had two EMTs on staff and they're here tonight, Gina Egert and Santina Lovelace. And then along with them was Ariel Hartung, an RN from the Melrose Hospital, and then Dr. Pat Heller, who can't be here tonight. Were along with for that transfer and then on the way to to the St. Cloud Hospital before they arrived, the baby was born in the back of the ambulance. And so it's the first for us. It's pretty exciting. I had sent a message to the director of the Mayo Ambulance. And I typed the email kind of asking, you know, there's this, there's always been this story of when is our ambulance going to get their STORC PIN for this to happen? And, you know, is that true? Does that really happen? Of all of our female members that have been pregnant over the years, anytime or our male members, their wives, as they got closer to their due date, we always would say, you know, stay at home and call us so that this could happen. And I sent the email to him and I think within 10 minutes, my cell phone rang because it's a big, this is a big deal for this to happen. And so, and so I wanted to make sure that, you know, obviously the council knew about it, congratulate the crew that this happened with and be able to acknowledge them. And then answer any questions that anybody has. We aren't going to obviously go through the date or the name of the patient as we don't want to publish that. But so we'd like the people that were involved to come up and Joe will take over from there.
Yeah. So we would really love to have pictures with you. So, you know, you know, Gina, Santina and Ariel, if you'd like to take a picture with the council, we'd really appreciate it. And we'll try, yeah, so we'll move the chairs on, we'll take a picture with all of you. We have Tony was on the ambulance bunker, Travis and I on the fire department. But So we're going to just, just little certificates of, you know, appreciations for what you've done, you know, what you do for our community. We very much appreciate it. Ah, you don't, can't shake hands, so.
Thank you.
And then this one will be for Dr. Heller that he can also have, but again, we do appreciate because every life is precious. And it's wonderful that you get to experience that, you know, like you said, not many people get to experience something like that.
No.
And that's definitely a gift. So and I'll hold this open for Dr. Heller and I'll take his place. I'm not as smart as him, but you know.
So you guys kind of all have to get together, please.
Now, for the newspaper, do you want us to write down all the names because he saw we're wearing masks, you know who we are?
No, we can't have this published.
I don't know.
Can't, I think we'll be able to. I'm still looking into that.
Okay. For once I get to stick out my tongue and you don't know about it.
I know, it's like, do I smile? Can't really tell.
Hope you guys are all smiling.
Yeah, you can see it, can't you?
But seriously, very much appreciated. That's awesome. I'm very happy for you. As being a firefighter, you know, that stuff is so cool.
Yeah.
And you guys get to experience it. That's awesome.
I didn't realize how exciting it was until these ones were freaking out. I'm like, don't let this happen again.
She's saying drive faster. I'm slowing down.
Yeah, don't break the speed limit.
I literally yell chop, chop.
Yes, I will. Yes.
Well, appreciate it. And thank you, Jen, for all you do. Julie, Jordan. All right, the consent agenda, approval of minutes, bill's purchase orders, investments, resolution number 20, 2043, resolution appointing election judges for the general election. Then there is a payout number three for marquee excavating for the Fifth Street project. Number eight for mission mechanical for the city center HVAC. Can I get a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Second. All right. All fair say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carried. We are on to a public hearing. It is 6:11 right now, public hearing to abate nuisance to the city code section 93.21. Scott?
Yeah, good evening. This evening's hearing is, you know, asking the council to issue an order to abate a nuisance at 110 Rose Park Southwest. The, you know, procedurally, you know, first step was chief mouse sends out a notice directing abatement. That notice isn't complied with, then we bring it to the council. Now, the council is, I never tire of saying this. You guys, you know, are all three branches of government in one. Most of the time you're, you're acting as an executive, but you also act in a legislative capacity and you do act in a judicial capacity. So when you're having these hearings and, you know, deciding whether to issue these orders, you're acting like a judge. You need to review the information presented to you. You'll, you have the opportunity to ask questions while you're here. And then later in the action items, after the hearing is over, you'll be asked to make a decision as to whether or not to declare this a nuisance and direct that it be abated. In your packet, there is a proposed resolution that would direct the abatement. Included in that are some exhibits A through F, which gives you a great deal of the background of this information. A lot of documentation and correspondence back and forth. Just recently, we also received a engineering report from Mr. Bonner's, the engineer on the condition of the trailer. We've added that to your package as well so that you've got that information to review and make your decision on. We've also got some, you know, in the packet, there are some pictures, but I also asked that we could have them displayed here. And maybe Lisa and Craig, if you can kind of help with when the pictures were taken.
The pictures up there are taken today. I think he's on a hard time here.
Okay, so, yeah, I'm not, I'm not seeing any pictures myself, but. So.
Oh, I haven't. Sorry, Lisa, do you want this?
That's okay. Go ahead and just forward it.
Okay, so this is pictures of the trailer in question. Now, these were taken today. Is that my underst, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so these are taken today. And if we can go through, forward and scroll through them, you'll also see some clearer pictures of the ones that were in your agenda package. So, yeah, if you want to. Go to the next one. That is then close ups of, you know, a stop work order that was placed and that's described in your agenda. That was posted by our building official, Mark Heron. There was also then a notice placed that the building is unsafe is also attached to the. And continue. I guess that's it. There are also then pictures in your agenda package that were taken as well. That show, you know, the condition of the, of the trailer earlier when this process started. If we've got, like, as you can see, the basic problem is that, you know, there, the work has been done here without ever having had a building permit taken. That's why we've got the stop work orders and the unsafe up there. Notice posted. We've also, it's never been installed and anchored. It was delivered to the site and that was as far as it went. So the, like you said, some work was started, but there was done without any permits. We've been reviewing this matter and the, and again, I won't belabor everything that's in your agenda. You know, you've had a chance to review the discussions going on there, but we've got a trailer that I think is, you know, been taken out of code and compliance and you, you will read where there's been determinations by state officials from the Department of Labor and Industry that are responsible for enforcing the building codes. You'll also see a statement in the engineering report from Mr. Bonner's attorney that, you know, that it's currently unenhatables. If you, there's references in the materials to the state code in particular, section 1300.018, which states that all unsafe buildings and structures are a public nuisance and must be abated by repair, rehabilitation, demolition, or removal. The city's code, its own nuisance code at 9315, particularly item C, you know, states that whoever by their act or failure to perform a legal duty intentionally, you know, maintains or permits a condition which unreasonably annoys, injures, or endangers the safety, health, moral repose of any considerable number of or members of the public or is guilty of any other act or omission declared by law to be a public nuisance. Then it goes on to, so we've got a violation of the state building codes that, you know, declare this to be a public nuisance. We've got it in our own city code, it refers to, you know, a violation such as this as being a nuisance, a public nuisance. So we are, we have submitted the request or the direction from the chief to abate it without any action. So now we are proposing that the council issue its order. As in the past with these items, if the council issues the order, we'll serve it. And then in this case, the, the property owner would have 45 days to abate the nuisance. If it's not abated in that time, the next step would be to go to the court to ask the court for an order to enforce the council's order. And that order would, the court would then also order that it be abated. And if it's not, then it would authorize the city to go in and abate it and then, and all permit the city then to recoup its costs of abatement as a special assessment against the property. It'd be added to the property taxes. Now, also this evening, while the hearing, it'd be the time for the council, if they got questions. As you see in your packet, the community development director, Lisa Atkinson was, has contributed quite a bit. She is here this evening and could answer questions. Our city building inspector, Mark Harren, he's here this evening also and could ask, answer any questions. And then on our go to meeting, Mr. Bonner's attorney, Jason Steck, is also present. Don't know if he has a presentation or, or has questions, or if you would have any questions of him, he's available that way.
And Larry Anderson from the State Department.
Yeah, excuse me, and Larry Johnson. Yeah, Larry Johnson with the State Department of Labor and Industry. You'll also see him refer in your minutes as contributing to some of the information. Again, if you have questions, he's available on the go to meeting also. Do council have any questions? Now is the time to ask.
So Scott, how long have we been dealing with this?
The building was first moved into Rose Park March of 2019. Yeah, Mar, early May.
So it's over a year already, right?
So, yeah, it was a year, it's close to a year and a half. I think the, it was moved in. The, the work that began without a permit was this spring and that was.
Can actually jump in there. It started already when they, we had conversations with Mr. Bonner prior to him moving the house in and.
Hey, Mark, go to the mic.
Sorry.
And just announce your name just for the people that are.
Public hearing, so we have to state for the record who you are. Identify yourself. And you could take your mask off if you're talking.
Mark Heron, city building official. The work without a permit would have probably technically started when he moved the house in. Myself, as well as I think some other city staff had conversations with Mr. Bonner about moving a house into town and the process for doing that and told him about the permits that are required to move a building in. And that was kind of the last we heard from him until somebody in city hall here saw the house coming down Main Street. So that probably technically be when the work started without a permit was the day he moved the house in.
So he moved it in knowing that he's supposed to get this first?
Correct.
Oh.
Yeah, to recap this, on April 2nd, Mr. Bonner received in writing the permit procedure. The house came in a month later, May 2nd. So he knew that it required certain permits. And I think as I read through it to recap, is one of them was they had to have a serial number and a number of different things. Nothing was provided. It just showed up in town. So everything after that is a moot point because the structure came into the city improperly to start with. There was never, it never went through the correct process, so it never should have come into the city. And now we're chasing our tail in a circle because, well, we've got this done and we've got that done and we've got that done. It never should have been here. It should have never showed up.
Correct.
So, you know, I, I don't know what we're debating, you know. I read this material, I read it twice and the emails back and forth. And it's like, well, I don't think, you know, it's proper or it's legal that we have to have licensed contractors. It doesn't make any difference. Who's doing the work on this junk heap? It never should have showed up here in the first place. So that's, that's the issue.
Just going back through the materials, it was early May of 2019 that it was moved in. And then some of the work that you're seeing in the pictures that was started was, would have been this spring. So it was in the community about a year after it was moved in. So any other questions? Again, for, well, we've got staff here and, say, Mr. Harren and Mr. Johnson and Ms. Atkinson and.
So we've done everything the right way to, we've done everything right on our end?
Yes.
None of, none of our permitting procedure as far as bringing the structure into town is out of the ordinary from probably any other community bringing in a mobile home structure.
I, I can't speak to what other communities do. I, we have had a ordinance requiring permits for moving. And it's, it's a, it's an ordinance of general application. If, if, for a while, we were having, you know, stick built, traditional houses being moved in and out of town. And so it applies to, you know, all structures that are, you know, coming in and coming out, you know, that. And, and part of it is, you know, safety, you know, what's the route? When's it coming in? Do we got things like lines? That's maybe not as much of an issue with, with a manufactured house as if you got a two-story house going down the road. But we also try to address, you know, if you're taking something out, making sure that the lot gets repaired. That you don't walk away and leave an empty basement or an empty, or other hazardous items. If you're bringing it in, we try to, we've got requirements then about, you know, if it's a manufactured home, getting it set. Or if it's a stick house, getting it on its foundation properly. And, and again, it's so that you don't have things setting and, and becoming a safety issue.
Well, it just appears to me that the, the structure owner is taking the attitude that it's easier to ask for forgiveness than permission. You know, I'll go ahead and do it. Once it's there, they can't do anything about it. And then we'll dicker about how we get things fixed or repaired or what the procedure is going to be after that. And it's just, it's going at, it's going at backwards. So I, I don't think we've got any option other than to just keep moving forward. We're this far invested in it. Police chief, the, the director over there or inspector, we've got hours and hours and hours into this. And it's like, you don't know if you stepped through the floor, you don't know if the ceiling's going to collapse with snow because there's never been any inspections done on it. I, my opinion is we push forward and we keep, keep going with this process. My opinion is, we push forward, and we keep, keep going with this process.
Well, and I guess, at this point, where, when you get to the action items, you know, you can, is maybe more appropriate time for the council to discuss their opinions. This is, you know, to then also, to present the information to you.
Let the public have their...
And let the public have their, any other public folks wanting to have. I, I do want to just check our folks on the, out on the internet, if either Mr. Johnson or Mr. Steck would have anything they'd want to add.
Can you repeat that, just to make sure that both are online?
So, whoever's online, is there anybody that needs, would like to say anything to the council and to the audience?
This is Jason Steck. Can the council hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can, Jason.
I'm having some difficulty hearing Mr. Dimick, that's why I asked. There is some things that have been said that aren't accurate from Mr. Bonner's perspective. The, it's not true that the City of Melrose's move-in policy is the same as other communities. Apparently, we've never encountered another community that requires a permit to simply move the house into the community at all. Certainly, there's permits required for placement and for habitation of the structure, but never a move-in permit. And the contractor that Mr. Bonner used had no knowledge of any similar requirement anywhere else, and he works all over the state. Additionally, Mr. Bonner has submitted two payments for permits, and has received no permits. So, I, I mean, we acknowledge that there's some permits that need to be straightened out, certainly, but it's not true that he's just completely ignored the permitting process. He received instructions on how to apply for a permit, he responded with that and paid for it. He then received another email saying, oh, you didn't pay enough for the permit, you need to pay more. He submitted that payment, and he never got a permit for it. It's also not true that the, that they've spent no inspections done. The, the council should have, for the exhibit app, which is an engineering report that Mr. Bonner paid for for the structure. And it acknowledges that the work has, that there's more work to be done, but it also notes that there's not a substantial amount of work done. Mr. Bonner acknowledges that there's work that needs to be done on the building, he's certainly willing to comply and cooperate in good faith to get the permitting issues straightened out and to get this taken care of. He's not just trying to ignore the process, trying to fix up the building so it'll be a nice house.
But, the documentation, and we've got 50 pages of it that we're looking at, this permit, no permit, this permit, no permit, this all happened well after May 2nd of 2019. Now, does Mr. Bonner acknowledge that he received, or approximately April 2nd, he received the permitting process paperwork?
He acknowledges that he received at some point some permitting process paperwork, he filled it out and returned it. And that's the last he heard from it. He also has, says that he has returned a certification of a HUD seal. And he gave that to, I believe it was Ms. Atkinson. And that has disappeared, and nobody can find it. So, Mr. Bonner feels like every time he turns in paperwork on this thing, it simply disappears, and he's told that he never did it.
All right, well, sir, I'm looking at a structure, building, or manufactured home moving permit application. I can't tell who signed it at the bottom. It looks like a J-something, 5/7/19. Okay, that would be 15, 15 days after the structure showed up in Melrose. Sir, are you there?
Uh, yes.
Okay, that's 15 days after the structure showed up in Melrose. Do you have a copy of the document I'm looking at, sir?
I, which exhibit number is that?
Uh, it's page 25 of our packet. Name of applicant, Melrose Community LLC, looks like in a Dyna, Minnesota address. Moving...
That would be Mr. Bonner's office address, yes.
Moving contractor is Woodland Homes, Wyoming, Minnesota. Estimated moving date, moved, M-O-V-E-D. Structure came from someplace in St. Paul Park.
I see that, that appears to be Mr. Bonner's signature, yes.
Okay. So, that's five days after the structure arrived here. Sir, that's five days after the structure arrived here.
I acknowledge that.
Okay, and he was provided the information a month before the structure arrived here.
Okay, I, I, I don't think he can see that. I simply have, the only information I have is that he submitted a couple of permit applications after he was told, after, he, he does not acknowledge that he was told before the home came in, that there was a permit required to simply move it into the city.
Okay, so, when, when, when Mr. Bonner contacted city staff on her about February 19th of 2019, and he was sent written information on April 2nd of 2019, I guess our city staff is, is untruthful about that?
I would always hesitate to say somebody's being untruthful. I say recollection is it.
Okay, 'cause, 'cause in my opinion, we're going about it backwards. If it would have been permitted correctly before the move, I believe Mr. Bonner may have had a leg to stand on. But, it doesn't appear that's the situation.
And, and your honor, I'm sorry, just talking to judges. The, Mr. Bonner is not trying to ask that the council not approve a resolution for abatement. He's got concerns about what's included in there as being contrary to, to state law, some of the details of it, but his intention going forward is to comply with the 45-day requirement, fix the building, and fix the permitting issues.
Um, go ahead. How many days did Mr. Bonner meet with city staff? How many times?
I don't know. He's referred to, he's told me about a big twice.
We met with Mr. Chaney three or four times.
And, and they met with Mr. Chaney three or four times, that's been told to us?
And, yeah, I understand Mr. Chaney's had a lot more contact, I believe.
Okay. All right. Lisa, would you come up and talk about that, please?
Um, the, the permit that he is requesting...
I'm sorry, will you identify yourself?
Sure, Lisa Atkinson, the community development director. The permit information that he's speaking about, he did apply for the permit. The reason we couldn't issue the permit is because we never received information regarding the HUD seal. There was no inspection prior to moving. He could have paid for the inspection after moving, but that didn't occur, I don't believe. There's the procedural, we weren't able to issue the permit because he didn't meet the permit requirements.
And there's no title either.
And there's no title. We got some paperwork information, but stuff just didn't add up right, and nothing was ever confirmed completely.
Well, I, Mr. Bonner's never been told about any specific deficiencies with the paperwork, and certainly not told about what, I, I don't know what it means to say that it doesn't add up completely.
Is there any other questions? Or anybody else would like to speak? All right, it is 6:38. We will visit with this in the action items.
I'd like to speak if I heard. My name is Larry Johnson. I work for construction clause in licensing.
Hi, yes, sir?
Some of the information that's provided is not accurate. One of the things I'd like to talk about is the HUD seal. You cannot get a replacement HUD seal. What you can do is get a certification letter from HUD saying that at the time of manufacture, the home was code compliant. That does not make it a valid seal. The State of Minnesota has voided the HUD seal and asked that the seal be returned to the State of Minnesota. Nobody can get a hold of the seal, and it has not been returned to us. The reason we did that is based on Minnesota Rule 1350, 3800, which clearly states if the home has been altered, it voids the certification label. That information should be on all of your packages. Now, I'll tell you, Mr. Bonner would have applied for his permits and submitted the plan for the work that he was going to complete. There wouldn't have been a problem. But, he did not do that from all the information that I've been provided. He started tearing the home, or, and working on the home. He did electrical work, which must have an electrical contractor. There's plumbing work that's been done in there. You must have a plumbing contractor, licensed plumbing contractor. You're supposed to have licensed contractors performing work, which did not happen. Mr. Bonner submitted paperwork indicating that there's a $15,000 exemption from his, his person who was doing the work, that he could do work because it wasn't over $15,000. However, they never applied for that, and they did not receive that permit. And I've asked them to produce that, and I've never got that information. So, this, all that information is, is, we just can follow the process to do it correctly. And the city has been telling me that all that information was provided for him and requested multiple times, yet he's ignored that. You know, the, the process, it's, it's under the state statutes that you have to apply for permits and submit documentation of the work to be done. The local jurisdiction reviews that process, and whatever, whatever they're going to modify and change and do the work on, and then, if everything meets the code, he will approve that, but that never happened. That's the biggest problem with the situation that I see.
Okay.
And, and some of that information that Mr. Johnson just provided is just flat wrong. The contention is ten that no permit will be issued unless being done by a licensed contractor. And it's Minnesota Statute 326B dot 805, subdivision 6, paragraph 5. They state that no permit is required if the work, or no, I'm sorry, no license is required when the person doing the work performs less than $15,000 of work a year. This is the sort of thing that's, that's put in place so that people can do do-it-yourself projects. Mr. Chaney, who's been doing the work, does not do $15,000 a year of contracting work, and thus, he is not required to be licensed to do the work. What keeps happening here is that city officials keep trying to put requirements on Mr. Bonner as a precondition that are not proper. As a matter of fact, at the beginning of the council's package, is the, the first letter that the city, the first information the city provided, they told them initially that the home had to be valued at 50% of a new home in order to be brought into the city. That was wrong. And because there's an express exception in the city code for manufactured homes. There's, there's this continuing process of putting requirements on that are contrary to state law, and then saying, well, we won't give you a permit until you do this.
So, in essence, what you're saying is that if I want to put a hot tub in my backyard, and I'm going to be plugging in electrical to it, but I don't have an outlet outside, I don't have to have a, a electrical, a licensed electrical individual run a wire from my service box in the basement, punch a hole through the outer wall, and put an outlet plug in there, correct?
Well, I believe that the statute that I'm quoting here refers to residential building contractors. I'm talking about electrical work. Talking about the building contractor, but what work could serve? I don't know if it applies to electrical.
So, Mr. Chaney didn't touch any of the electrical wires?
I don't know what he specifically...
Exactly. Exactly. You hit it right on the head, brother. You don't know what's going on in that house, and neither do we.
All right. All right, it's...
There is, I would like to say something else. There is an exemption, that $15,000 exemption, like you spoke of. However, that does not apply to electrical plumbing. And the exemption was never granted. It was never applied for. Do you have documentation showing you have an exemption? It, it's not an applicat-, where is the application process that the license requirement does not apply to?
Fellas, I think we're heading for a court of law on this issue.
Okay. All right.
Just, is there, I guess, call for any further...
Yeah.
...questions or comments? Otherwise, then, if everyone is finished, we would, we could close the hearing and...
Close the hearing, yep. So, is there any last questions for anybody? All right, it is 6:40.
I would like to, I would like to say one more thing. I, I received a copy from Beckford and Whitley in the engineering department, and I spoke to the fellow that did the inspection also. And he identified that it would need to have a 32-item compliance check, inspection performed. That no longer applies because the HUD tags have been voided.
Okay, yeah, I...
All predictions, all predictions were performed on the house, on electrical and plumbing and actual, many structural items also. So, at that point, the HUD tags are avoided.
'Cause I see...
Not given.
Yep, I do see that under the discussion where it said that, you know, being the HUD tags. I, I do see that here on, on that consult engineers from Beckley and Whitley.
We've asked to have the HUD tags returned to us, but we have not received anything yet. But, the HUD tags are voided. Whether we get them back or not, they're voided.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. All right, it is 6:46. I'm going to close this public hearing now. And then, we're going to our next public hearing, still 6:46. Vacation easement, Lot 6 and 7 of Block 1 of Daylight Court. Lisa?
Good evening. Before you tonight is a request to vacate an easement along a shared lot line. Two parcels have been acquired by the same property owner, and they would like to build a house that would extend across the property line. There is no utilities that are actually in the easement, it's just a standard drainage and utility easement. I believe there's a graphic that shows that.
What would happen to them? There's all the other pictures.
There it is. So, it's this shown in yellow right there. And staff recommends approval is a pretty standard process. Like I said, it's just a standard drainage utility easement that is not currently used or needed.
Okay. All right, is there any questions or discussion? All right, we're at 6:47. We're going to close this meeting, and we will take action in a little bit. We are on to reports. Police chief report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For our August 2020 monthly statistics, in our traffic area, we had 35 citations, 118 verbal warnings, and two writ warnings. In 2020, for August, we had 417 calls or requests for service. Last year's 387. So, that's the first month of this year that we've been actually on the increase instead of the downside. It's good to see. And last year, we ended on ICR... And last year, we ended on ICR 3023 and this year, we're at 2463. So, overall for the year, we're still down by 560 calls and requests for service. 28 agency assists, which is still a common number for us. Some areas to highlight, the ordinance issues that were issued for abatement by the council for two or three different properties. The last meeting, those all have been resolved, as well as all the ordinance issues for the summer so far. I had a couple of them that have popped up related to vehicles, expired tabs again on properties. Starting work with the property owners and we may or may not see those come to the council at the October meeting. We'll see how far they get. It's good to see the public's made the traffic adjustments related to school. Definitely changed since the first week, so that's good to see and we hope that that continues. Any questions for me at all related to the report or anything else?
No. Thank you, Chief. Scott?
Couple of items noted in my report. In addition to the nuisance issue that was the subject of the hearing, work being done on Fifth Street, city engineer discovered that there was a section of Fifth Street that the city didn't have an easement for. So, working with them, we got an easement prepared. Also, a couple items going to, again, more building and property issues. There was a question about utility services when you've got a residential building that's a multifamily. And we made, were able to determine that, yeah, if it's a multifamily home, you either have a single utility service that's the responsibility of the owner or you've got to have separate meters for each unit. So, we want to clarify that for the property owners and the utilities. Other issue that came up is a broken water main or sewer main. And, you know, there was a bad situation for the home with the broken sewer main. And so, as an emergency measures, the, that was dug up and repaired. But then there's always a question about costs when that's done. And we was able to confirm that, yeah, in those circumstances, if the property owner doesn't reimburse the city, the city has got the authority to assess the owners for the cost of that, that work. So, odds and ends that came up in the last month. So, any questions on those items?
I'm good. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Community Development Director, Lisa?
In your report is an outline of the building permits year-to-date. We're slightly down from last year, but that's probably to be expected. We also have somewhat smaller projects, but a fair number of projects for 2020. Permit numbers, we're at just two permits below where we were last year. So, we're seeing a lot more smaller residential permits, I think, this year. Planning Commission at their last meeting recommended approval of the variance from Tom Skirbel regarding a new single-family home on a lot that's 6,500 square feet in size. The minimum lot size is 8,000 square feet and so that will be before you, a little later on this evening. The planning commission did recommend approval of that. That's for 306 Second Street Southeast. It's to replace a fire demolished home that was removed from the lot several years ago. Matt has had some applications that are coming in for grants for business assistance. We're up to 19 applications so far and over $500,000 in funding requests. The deadline has been extended till tomorrow. So, any businesses that still would like to make applications should do so by tomorrow. And we have about $300,000 in funds available. Melrose Township has offered to make some of their funds available to the Melrose City businesses, which is very generous of them. I think that's everything. Anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. City Engineer Report, Mr. Mike?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, how we've been working with Gary on some of the future street projects for 2020 and beyond. We were going to get some soil borings for some of the streets, but I had asked Tim Vogel to do some televising of the sanitary sewer to make sure that that's in good shape before we move ahead with the soil borings. If the sewer is in good shape, we probably don't need the soil boring. So, we'll hold off and just do paving cores on those streets to save some money if, if that sewer is in good shape. I talked to Tim and he's going to get that scheduled as soon as there, people have time, so.
So, you got some of this in the sewer that we have an indication the base is moving?
Well, yeah, it's probably, the age of that sewer is probably vitrified clay pipe, which is brittle. The joints open up and susceptible to collapsing. One of the, on Fourth Street, we had just got done paving and then the house adjacent to Fourth Street, I don't remember the address, they had a sewer issue. We thought they were going to have to dig into the street. So, my concern always is that, you know, if we're going to spend money on a street, that we don't go digging into it for at least five to 10 years. So, it's kind of preventative medicine, you know, to look at that sewer before. Or at least so we know what kind of condition it's in before we start working on the street, so.
Because if the sewer's in tough shape, it's already open, you might as well, your thinking is you might as well repair the sewer?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, if, yeah, if we're going to remove the surfacing on the street, now's the time to do the sewer and, and/or water main. You know, that's depending on the age of that. You know, if it's 50 years old, then we should probably look at replacing it. We'll have more of that information as, as we move forward here, so. Just an update on that County Road 65, that contractor is scheduled, Lisa, that probably would be sometime in October before he gets to it. But as long as it gets done before freeze again this fall here. 2020 street improvements, got a couple of punchless items. Gary and I needed to walk the project and come up with a final list of corrective action for markedly excavating. Couple of sidewalk panels cracked. We've got to take out a piece of curb that got missed. I think there was a pile of dirt on it when they were taking out curb. So, they'll get that probably in the spring. We'll probably let it go through winter. Probably be a few more panels of sidewalk that breaks, so we'll get it all taken care of next spring, so. We did, we did excavate more than we originally anticipated. I think the council authorized up to about $25,000 in additional excavation. I think we used about half of that. So, at about $12,000 over and about, above what was originally planned. And we did take out a fair amount additional curb and gutter and sidewalk and get that replaced. Then when we looked at it, decided that it doesn't need ADA or drainage condition. So, we took that out and corrected that. Casey's, I did a walkthrough for the temporary certificate of occupancy. I found everything to be satisfactory, except the fence hadn't been completed. I think they're having a material delivery issue. And then they were actually completing the sod as I was out there. I didn't wait around for them to finish it. I assume it's done now. I think they got their temporary CO. So, as the fence gets done, we'll follow up and do a final inspection on that. And throughout the year, there'll probably maybe be a few erosion issues that they have to take care of with normal maintenance, so. One other issue was that Roger, Avosgard, indicated that they were planting evergreen trees in the electric easement on the west side of the fence. I have not had an opportunity to discuss that with Jamie from Strack, but we'll be meeting with Roger and Roger sees it to be an issue down the road. I mean, people can plant trees in the easement, but 20 years from now, when they're big and nice and providing a screen, if he has to go in there and cut them down, then it could be a problem. So, they may have to adjust the location on those a little bit to get outside of the easement, so. And I think we talked a little bit about, there's been some flooding around Second Street and Third Avenue. I think it's been going on for several years, many, many years, I guess. So, we're looking at that. Got a couple of different alternatives. I just did a preliminary design on the pipe size and right now, we've got an 18-inch pipe in Fifth Street. And it probably is going to take a 36 to a 42-inch pipe to provide a tenure design storm. One of the bigger issues may be the ditch that is south of Craft that runs out to the interstate. It's pretty flat and it always plugs up. So, we'll be evaluating, you know, if we put in the larger storm sewer pipe, can that ditch handle and convey the water out to the I-94 ditch? Or will we need to put in some pipe and some improvements along the way? So, that project is probably not slated for three or more years, but we wanted to start taking a look at it now. There's maybe some opportunity to provide some stormwater ponding in certain locations. It could reduce the size of the pipe and save some money, so we're going to start looking at that shortly, so. The Melrose Dam and Bridge, I got an update today and I think there's a big pow-wow meeting on Wednesday of next week with the DNR and Corps to review the latest submission of the channel realignment. And our, our crew is hoping that after that, that they can actually move forward with the design and get back on schedule and get caught up on that schedule, so. Are there any questions?
I'm good. Tony?
Sounds good.
Thanks a lot, Mike, for all you do.
Thank you.
City Administrator Report?
Just to kind of follow up a little bit with what Mike was talking about, as far as Casey's goes, we did give them a CO, but we said that they had to get that fence in as soon as possible. And our police department is, if there's trucks that go there, they're monitoring that and telling them basically they kind of have to shut down so that they're not creating the noise. On Wednesday, they were supposed to have the fence materials here. They weren't here. I called Strack Construction, the materials. I've, the truck will be here at 1 o'clock tomorrow and he's got a crew coming to start the installation of that fence. So, what I'm hoping is once that happens, then we'll be, you know, we'll be in really good shape as far as the noise and that type of thing. I have every day gone out there early in the morning and then when I leave work too, just to check periodically. There's only been one truck there and it was not a full-size semi truck. It was more of just a, you know, I suppose a bread truck. It wasn't a very large truck just parked there and didn't seem to have its engine going. But we are aware of that. We want to be sensitive to the neighbors because it is a concern that they have addressed. And I did get calls from a couple neighbors and I have followed up with them, just so you're aware of that. The other thing I wanted to make you aware of is, yes, the legislature had a fourth special session. However, in that session, all they did was extend the governor's powers. They did not talk about the bonding bill, nor did they talk about the budget. They are still, because it was too soon, they were in that blackout period, so they were not able to discuss that. There is a new forecast that should be coming out shortly. And then in November, there will be a very large budget forecast that the state will, will, will be coming out from the state. If they are going to have a special session, I would anticipate it was supposed to be September 21st, but the sides must still be negotiating because there hasn't been an announcement about that session yet. If they were to have one, I would anticipate it's going to be in that September 28th, first week in October timeframe. However, the further we get into this year, the less optimistic I am that it's actually, they're going to get a bonding bill passed. But I feel that if they are not able to meet the end of September, beginning of October, I don't know what's going to happen because I think then we're getting just too close to elections. So, hopefully, they're getting a lot of pressure. They're getting pressure from communities. There's many communities, not just ours, that have actually sent resolutions to them requesting that they consider a bonding bill. There's been a significant amount on both sides, you know? The legislators are hearing from their constituents, so they know that this is very important. The trade, a lot of the trades industries are very much also saying, you know, this is something that would really help the Minnesota economy. Most of these are very large projects and if you get a contractor in here, for example, ours is a 21-month build. So, that will be probably a future discussion. The other thing that I think, depending on what happens with the budget forecast, and Tess is going to talk about this a little bit later in the agenda as far as our budget and where we're going to be at with the levy. But the other thing to keep in mind is I, I believe that our local government aid will be impacted in '21. And so, hopefully, in the next couple of months, we'll have a better sense of what that would look like. But at this point, we are not sure because the state hasn't come back into session, so. And they don't have their budget forecast, so they may not, they may not be making a move relative to LGA until '21. So, at any point, the state can decide not to send us a check, but our budgets are already done for the year. And so, this happened, I believe, in seven and nine. So, that just essentially means we're, we're not getting money that we relied on. So, as you will see later on when we talk about this, we budgeted a little less from LGA just from the standpoint that we wanted to be smart about that and conservative, you know? And I think that's really all I have for now, Mr. Mayor. There's other items on the agenda that we'll be going over.
Yep. All right. Thank you. All right. We are on to action items.
Mr. Mayor, due to the fact that Councilman Justin Freeler had an emergency work situation and wasn't unable to attend, I believe we should table Resolution 2020-40 until the October meeting.
Yep. That is what I was getting at. So, yeah, we are just going to take it off the agenda. So, then for an action, I, Resolution Number 2020-44, Resolution ordering the abatement of the nuisance conditions located at 110 Rose Park, Southwest in Melrose, Minnesota. Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, I would just like to ask a question. Is there, you know, looking at the work that you saw going on in there, you know, the work looks decent. It's just obviously a picture. It would be, if it got done up to code, got the permitting, all figured out, it would be one of the nicer homes out there, mobile homes, appearance-wise. Is there a path? If we, Scott, realistically, if, if we pass this resolution to abate, will we give an honest effort to work with them and get this stuff figured out? Not saying not to pass a resolution. I just want to make sure that we, we do everything we can.
Prior to the meeting, in fact, almost right up to the meeting, I had been in conversations with Mr. Steck. We had originally, I had originally prepared a resolution that said, you know, remove or demolish in 30 days. And, you know, after some discussions with Mr. Steck, with the city administrator, the community development director, that what you've got now is, we've modified it and to allow for repairs and gives 45 days to, you know, get those permitting things squared away. So, that, and the 45 days was the number I had gotten from Mr. Steck. So, apparently, Mr. Bonner thinks that if he gets 45 days, he can get the permitting thing squared away and he would have an opportunity to then repair the property.
All right.
So...
Okay. I just want to make sure we're not going down a path and saying, yeah... I just want to make sure we're not going down a path and saying, yeah, you know, we'll give them 45 days, but we're not going to work with them at all. We're just going to hold everything up and, you know, you know, I'm going with that. Because obviously, if the work gets done, it will be inspected. If it's not inspected, we're right back. We have the authority to go take it to the next level.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, so I mean, like you say, so that was, you know, the, and if you, if you look at Chief Mouse, Chief Mouse's letter, it told, that did not allow the repair option. It, it just said remove or demolish. So, you know, that, that language was the repair and the additional, you know, 15 days was added after discussions with Mr. Bonner's attorney.
Travis?
I think the, one of the bigger things was is that it moved in without the proper permitting in the first place. So that's maybe the part that I feel a little hung up on is that the whole thing was gone about the wrong way. And now they're going to ask him to resolve it. But other than that, I think the state guys got a better grip on, you know, what their real problems are on site currently.
I think I, I think I know where Councilman Klosen is coming from. My concern is, once the walls are covered up, how does an electrical inspector have any idea as to what, what occurred as far as the wiring issues?
And that's where I agree with you. If they can't be inspected, then...
I just don't, it seems to me like we are jumping over processes on top of processes, you know, with, with the promise. And I understand where you're coming from.
Right.
But I don't see a lot of the promise coming true on the other side here. We put in a new heating plant. You know, I would certainly hope that, that some professional would come in to make sure that the gas piping or whatever the situation is done properly. We sign, you know, we sign off on this thing, and Jan, the middle of January, my pager goes off for an explosion in Rose Park. You know? There we are.
Well, and, and, yeah, inspected, properly done, you know? Obviously, everything has to be done correctly.
Right. And like I say, it just doesn't appear that all of a sudden, okay, now the walls are sheet rocked or whatever, whatever you do in a structure like that. So you've got outlets, and they can, they can plug something into the outlet. But who knows what's behind those walls and in the ceilings and that? You know, that's, that's my concern because it just appears to me like we've been trying to cut corners from day one. So that, that's my concern.
And turning, and he mentioned that he paid X amount of money for each step of the permit. But since there was no permit given, he still couldn't, you know, move forward. The point is, you need a permit, no matter if you paid it before or not. And this letter does say that they may need to expose the current work to re-inspect it. So they may have to be fine with it being tore apart again and starting over in a sense.
Well, you know, saying on to it, I, I guess I've been either on the council or in this position. I just, I, I just a lack of respect and trust that has been given to the city with anything that has happened over there. I, I just, I, I would put myself in your shoes, Bunker, that if something catastrophic happened up there, I, I couldn't deal, you know, handle myself saying that I said it was okay. And then something sneaks through the cracks with that. I'm just saying that I, I have no trust in the process that has happened and all the work that our city has gone through and all the, the people ours that the taxpayers have paid. You know, we've had to, you know, use the taxpayers' money for this, and it's always something up there. I, I'm, I don't like wasting the taxpayers' money that way for, for one place. I don't feel very confident or...
Correct me if I'm wrong, all the city expenses could, can be assessed with this process to the, or?
Not staffed.
Not staffed, okay.
If the, you know, if the council signs the order and the order is complied with, we're done. You know, the, the assessment follows on if we then, if it's, if the council's order is not complied with, and we go to court. You know, we've had several other nuisances that have come, you know, through to the council, you know, this year. And, you know, in, in those cases, you know, after the council's order was issued, you know, the property owner complied, and that was just the end of it. And in those cases, no, there's no recovery for the city's cost, you know, in bringing it to the council's attention and getting the order issued. The assessment comes in if we go to court and, and have to go that route.
Mark, would you like to, our, our city inspector would like to say something also.
May I speak for just a moment? The, the resolution before you has both the ability for them to repair, if they can do that, get the paperwork in within 45 days, and gives them some time to be able to actually get the work done. But still allows the process to continue moving forward.
Right.
Okay. Okay, you're okay then?
Yeah.
Yeah. Based on what I've heard, I have no problem enacting this. I think it gives both, both avenues.
It's down to 45 days.
Yeah.
And that's giving them an opportunity.
Right. Yep, and that's all I want to make sure that we're passing these things. And it's difficult to get stuff done, but this at least puts a deadline on it to get it done properly, so.
And, and is Mr. Johnson going to be aware of everything that's happening for, from the state, too?
Yes, he said he would work with us.
He will, okay. All right. Council, what is your decision?
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution for abatement.
Okay. We have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motions carried. Resolution Number 2020-45 vacating a general utility easement upon the petition of landover of lots 6 and 7 Block 1 of Daylight Court. Did we, you'll make a motion on that? Do I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carried. Resolution Number 2020-46, Resolution approving case number, you know, variance 8-2020-105. Application for a variance from the minimum lot area requirements in the R1 Single Family Residential Zoning District.
And this will in essence take two lots and combine them into one.
This is, this is the 6,500 square feet square variance.
Oh, okay, I, I'm sorry.
Yes, this...
I still had the...
Yeah, the other one. This is the one that's over here.
This had a home on it. The home was destroyed. It was vacant for more than a year, so it didn't fall under the legal non-conforming. It requires now a variance.
And, and all the other minimal, are there any other, if they put the same house on there, does that violate any of the impervious surface?
No, they have no issues with impervious surface. They're incidentally planning to bring in a manufactured home that's going to look a lot like a log home.
Okay.
It's not terribly huge, but it meets the minimum lot size requirements.
Okay.
Or the minimum house size requirement, excuse me.
Right, okay.
If you don't have any issues, can I get a motion to approve? So move.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motions carried. All right. Pavement coring and soil boring for future projects. Anybody want to talk on that or?
I think, you know, to to move forward with the project for next year, I think if we could just move ahead with the pavement coring. So it would be about $2,500 to do those. And if we find out through the televising process that we do need borings to a decent amount, that's a separate process from the pavement coring. So that could be added to the payment.
And can you just sort of tell people real quick again about paving coring? Or what, what, what the point of it was?
The pavement corings is, we want to find out what the, the condition of the existing matumis is. And if we're going to reclaim it, how much there actually is there? You know, if we want to know if we have two inches of matumis or four inches of matumis and, you know, six or eight inches of gravel. So we can reclaim that and recycle it to keep costs down. It helps us with our estimating.
Real quick on the really deep soil borings. Typically, we, if, if a road is appearing, like Fifth, Fifth Street was, obviously had some bad spots in it. So that's where the, the soil borings really help to identify where the bad soils are, correct?
Yes.
Going into a job. If it, and I don't know which, which roads we're, I didn't look real close. But do, do the roads that we were potentially thinking about doing the soil borings on them? Because they're a lot more expensive, correct, the soil borings?
Yes, they are.
Are the road, is the surface breaking up? Would that indicate that the subsurface, subgrade is bad?
The borings is where we probably do a full reclamation like we did up on Fifth. And not an overlay. I mean, if an overlay and if we have a sewer break, eh, you know, it's not ideal, but it's not the end of the world. But if we're going to do a, a full reclamation, then I want to make sure that that sewer is going to last 20-plus years without having any issues. Yeah, soil borings are not so much for the roadway, but it would be, it's more advantageous to, for the contractors to know what kind of soil they're digging in for the sewer. You know, is it going to be wet?
Right.
You know, that type of thing.
That's good.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike.
We need a motion then? So authorization to complete paving across, yeah, not to exceed the $2,500? You guys good with that?
Yep.
Just for the pavement course.
Yeah, just for the pavement course. Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motions carried. City of Melrose, Melrose Township Agreement, can you?
Melrose Township has stated that they would be willing to allow us to have their CARES Act funds, which was, as Lisa indicated before when she talked about in her report, very generous of them. It's $18,875 that they said, you know, we'd rather have it go to local businesses. However, in order to do that, there's a sub, excuse me, a sub-recipient agreement that has to be signed by both Melrose Township and the City of Melrose. Now, when, in talking to Jane from the township, they're still trying to get some tax ID and some paperwork done to get their request turned into the state. So they're still kind of working through that process. But we will work with them. They have to report the transaction on a monthly report to the state MMB. But we'll help them through that whole process because we're doing it for ours. Actually, the, September was the first time we had to do it. And so we'll kind of help them with all that. But again, we just need approval of, to enter into that agreement with Melrose Township for the subsidiary agreement for the CARES Act funds in the amount of $18,875.
Can I get a motion to approve? Okay, can I get a second?
I'll second.
You got anything else?
I was just curious, you know, we, we kicked around CARES Act dollars and how they're, we can't. How ma, how much reimbursement? Have we figured out how much we will qualify for as far as our expenses go? Taxpayer expenses, I should say. As far as what we've, we've, we've put forth, efforts, how we can use them? Have we discovered any other ways we can use them? The only reason I'm saying that is because if we can, you know, to give them to individual businesses, it's awesome. But I think everybody, as far as the tax base goes, if we can offset some of our general fund expenses, have we found more avenues to use that money or that would qualify for some of those CARES Act dollars?
So when we originally talked about this with the council, I believe it was last month or the month before. And when we discussed this with the council, we talked about what do, what do we need to do to make ourselves whole? So anything that we have spent on PPE, you know, the glass, any of those types of expenses, we have said that that's what we're going to do. And so we are keeping track of that, and I can't remember the dollar amount.
$13,438 in my...
There you go. So that is the dollar amount that we have spent. At that same meeting, the direction that we were given by the, the council was to then use the rest of the, the remaining balance of it for business, business relief. And so that's what we kind of set the program based on. And so we roughly have about $500,000 requests in business relief. But we did do what we needed to do for anything that we bought that was COVID-related. We did make ourselves whole.
Okay.
Yeah. But we didn't do extra, like, for example, we didn't use it for laser fish. We didn't buy extra computers.
I didn't know some other avenues have been approved or not, other than, okay.
And this $18,000 has to be specifically for that, like PPE and stuff? Or did they put a specific...
The $18,875 from Melrose Township has to be used on the two, there's, there's kind of three different programs. But it has to be used on what the county's program requirements are, which would be PPE. If it's going to be used for business relief, which is what Melrose Township has requested, then it's got to be for rent relief, taxes, utility bills, anything like that, that businesses have to.
So they gave some direction when they offered...
Yep, yep. Has to be business relief.
Have to be spent or have to be committed by November 1st of 2020? I keep seeing this November 1st of 2020.
November 1st is when we have to turn any remaining funds back to the county.
So if there's a commitment, but they're not necessarily...
I think we have to have spent what we need to spend by November 1st and reimburse the county anything we have on that.
Yeah. And the county and us are figuring it out because, of course, you know, we're a little different, I guess. We do, we've done it a little differently than other communities in terms of our business relief program. So there, we're trying to figure out with the county what, you know, it's kind of a moving target, how much we're going to get from them. We're figuring about $60,000 right now. So that's, but their stuff is 100% have to be up to $15,000 per business. And it has to be in the first two categories. Whereas if you recall, we added that third category, which gets at business loss and revenue type of stuff. So we'll see where we land with everything. But, you know, credit to, well, a huge thank you to Lisa for her hard work on this because she's really put a lot of time into this. And Tessa has helped as well. And so I think it's important that, that those staff people be acknowledged for the fact that they, this has been a very high priority. We've made it a priority for them. And they've done a good job of getting the word out and working with the business community.
Can I get a motion to accept those funds with the agreement?
We already have a first and a second.
Major, second.
Okay, we're good. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. On the old business, Resolution Number 2020-47 for adopting the proposed tax levy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are in the budget series for 2021 already. We met in October, or in August, excuse me, and had a working group meeting. At that point, we had a preliminary budget. The budgeted expense for the general fund were $2,950,505. And we had an original preliminary revenue budget for the general fund of $2,933,324. So that left us with a budgeted deficit of $17,181. In that original budget, we factored for a 3% increase in the general fund levy over the 2021. That was over the dollar amount. So that was our net, net tax capacity rate of a decrease of about 2.29%. So it was a flat budget. As Colleen alluded to earlier, with that, we had our original budget, including our full amount of LGA. That was roughly $934,000, I believe. However, since we met, we've been hearing some more news and more has come to light that there is a potential that our local government aid could be cut. And that is a big portion of our general fund budget. To give a little history, in 2007, our LGA dropped $105,000, which was about 14%. It came back slightly in 2008. And then in 2009, again, it decreased about 11%. And it stayed there for five years before it started coming back up again. Also, like Colleen said, we could find out at any time, including in, during the year, that they are going to un allot some of those funds. And at that point, we are tied into our budget. So included in your packet was a budget addendum. So included in your packet was a budget addendum. And what we tried to do is look at what could that impact look like on our fund balance, and what are some different scenarios that could happen. So we showed if we do receive the full amount of local government aid, what would happen if that was cut by 20%, by 30%, by 50%, looking at how that would impact our potential fund balance and our reserves. So typically, we come to you with a preliminary budget levy. This year is a little different because some of these things have come up. So I do have the original discussed preliminary levy of $1,323,550 for the general and a debt service levy of $90,000. We also have an option if we were to, instead of a 3% on the dollar increase, if we looked at a 5% increase. This adds roughly $25,000. So it doesn't make up if we would have that cut in LGA. Our tax rate would have a slight increase then, instead of a decrease of .29%, an estimated increase of .76%. So again, the tax rate that would be applied to individual properties wouldn't have a huge impact if we looked at that option. The third option, we have a preliminary tax levy at $1,510,518. And that is assuming a 20% cut in LGA. So that's roughly $186,000 more to make up for that loss of revenue that we could potentially have. Again, a debt levy of $90,000. So it brings the total proposed levy to $1,600,518. And as far as what that would do to the tax rate, instead of the first one that we talked about, having a decrease of .29%, that could increase the tax rate by 7.36%. So these options, what we approve tonight has to get certified to Stearns County by September 30th. This is not anything that we have to settle on. We cannot go lower than this when we approve our final levy in December.
Higher.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. We cannot go higher in December.
We are listening.
But we, yes, thank you. So, and then with this, we also have to approve our truth and taxation hearing. So that is proposed for December 17th at 6:00 PM at our regular meeting. Does anybody have any questions? A lot of numbers, a lot of options.
If, if we, if we would stick to either whatever we had preliminary before we heard LGA was getting cut, the 1/4, 1/4, 1/3?
Yes.
And let's say LGA takes a 20% cut this year. How does that affect our fund? Have you looked at the numbers, how it affects our fund balance next year? What, what will be at 50, 60% or, or?
Yes. So at the end of 2019, our fund balance as a percentage of the following year's expenditures is about 73%.
Okay.
With our original budget, assuming we get all of the LGA, we budgeted to bring that down a little bit. So then we were at about 64.5%. If we would have a 20% cut in LGA and we didn't make any other adjustments to our budget, that would bring it down to 58.4%.
Okay. Still, still within the recommended range, because what is recommended, 30 to 50?
Yes, 35 to 50.
Okay. And granted, oh, no, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I would never recommend getting anywhere close to that 35%. And even the 50s sometimes, you know, because you run into these situations, we could absorb that for one year, you know, and bring that down. But if history were to do the same as last time, that could hold true and we'd lose that funding for a number of years.
Right. And I guess, from my perspective, you know, last year, essentially, our general fund went up 300, general fund levy went up 350,000, which was a pretty big hike because we had the bond drop off. And we, we allocated that to the various capital funds, I believe.
Yes.
For the most part. In 2007, when we had, that was a major financial crunch. You know, we, we got all the department heads together, and we sat down at the table and we figured out what we could cut. Not, not only cut, but we could push back. I mean, we were pushing, you know, $250,000 plow trucks back and payloader, street projects, we pushed back numbers of years. To me, that's, that's where we should, we should be at is, we already, we already gave the general fund a large increase last year. We can tighten our belt if we need to. We haven't looked at, taken a hard look at, if we do run into a budget crunch this year, LGA gets cut 20%. I think our perspective should be, this year, for this year, we should look at what projects, what big purchases we can push back to help offset the, the, the shortfall in funding. Because everybody else is also, the people that are paying the taxes, the businesses that are paying the taxes. We can tighten our belt like they have to. I don't think government should be the first one to, it's so easy, just click this button and that's what we set it at. We should struggle with that also. So my perspective on setting the levy this year, especially, especially what everybody else is going through, is we should maintain a, a flat, a flat budget from last year, at least relatively flat levy from last year. Reassess it next year. If we need to tighten our belts again, we can do that.
And I, I agree with shaving here and sliding this back and sliding that back, but I just don't know, not having any idea of what may or may not come about for wastewater improvement, which I think is something that can't wait terribly long.
That's different fund. That's public.
That's different.
But our RDB project is on the general side.
But we got, we got a bridge that I think is getting in the que to get replaced, and we have to come up with some payment for that also.
And that's the capital, and we have a million and a half dollar unallocated funds in our capital improvement funds for one-time expenditure or something. Does that affect?
I believe that number also includes what was designated for essential care. So that's...
Yeah, yep, yep. So I, I guess in my mind, we, we have the money available for that if we need it.
Yeah. And that, that's my concern, that we don't sell ourselves too short.
Yeah.
Because those are things we know that are going to have to happen.
Right.
And granted, utilities is here and kind of city is here, but we still need some significant upgrade to the wastewater treatment plant. Some of it because we've got a couple of pretty good wet industries, and I want to make sure that we don't cut a lot of corners there.
Right. And this is, that is a completely separate fund. We don't have any influence over that. We don't spend money on that. That's completely public utilities, and that's, so as far as the water wastewater goes, that's...
Okay. One thing, I, I just got a quick speak for Justin. Justin said he was okay with the 7.3, you know, 6% for tonight, but see what we can do if we get, you know, if we can get a lower by the end of the year. That's what he liked to do. But he does want to definitely negotiate with this stuff before the end of the year. So that was Justin's point.
So that was option kind of B?
That was the third option.
Yeah.
Oh.
And, and that was sort of, the recommendation is that, yeah, I, I definitely, for, for setting the budget, I want to set it high, just until we know what the numbers are, what, what's gonna be coming from the state and stuff. And that's, that's my, you know, let's see what's gonna happen. Like I said, we can always push stuff back, but I would, I don't want to sell short. And, and that's where I'm at.
I typically agree with you on, on this, you know, set it high. But the, the pattern has been, we set it high, it pretty much always gets implemented at that rate.
Yeah. But you gotta look at what, you know, we have too. I mean, we, we have a lot of stuff happening. And I, you know, like I said, you know, we...
Right.
We're doing, we really do care about the taxpayers. But I just don't want to, all of a sudden, I don't want it to hurt later.
I would rather not see it go to the seven in the end, but like, I mean, next month, you're saying set it high, bring it back down, like Tony's saying, we probably should make an effort to get it back down to whatever's ideal. I don't know if running it flat's the perfect answer for, just sometimes it seems like you go three years or four years down the road, and then you, it really takes a jump to try to get projects done or equipment updated that you've kept down the road. But that's, you know, two extremes, like try to go flat, to try to go seven. I don't know what the magic number is in there, but I would think you'd want to do a, you know, a small increase.
Yeah. And, and just with, you know, back in those days too, you know, I remember all the roads, we pushed back, pushed back, pushed back, pushed back. You know, I, sooner or later, I feel they gotta get done.
I think we've, we're pretty well caught up now.
Yeah.
For the most part.
Yeah.
But we're back at that 2007 time again, potentially.
Potentially. So, all right. Like I said, I, I would really like to see the 7.36 as, as you, you know.
I'll make, I'll make a motion first. Which one was that?
I would nod. I, I was still talking.
Sorry, sorry. My bad.
Yeah, I, I, that's where I was getting at. I, I would like to, you know, make that motion for the 7.36%, but definitely see where we can make some trims on it, you know, when we do go through the negotiations for the next couple months, see what we can do. So that's where I'm at.
Yeah. I, I'm not sure what, how much effect it has on businesses, but at 7.36, if you have a house that's worth about $150,000, it'd be $9 a month. If you have a, or a, yeah, a house that's closer to $200,000, maybe closer to $12 a month.
Yeah.
You know, anywhere from $110 to $150 on the tax roll for, for a given year, for a given year.
So, so.
Was that a motion?
I, I did make a motion, so if anybody would like to second it.
And I just wanted to put that out there, that so folks knew what the potential increase was. I'm not gonna play with the math for $350,000 else, but.
So I did make a motion. If anybody wants to make a second, go for it.
I'll second your motion.
Okay. There's a first and second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
And what did you do, Travis?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Motion's carried. But I agree with Tony. Let's see what we can do for the years over, to live within the means too.
Right.
I agree with you, Tony. Okay.
Typically, we tend to meet in November for our working group meeting prior to the adoption. But it may be beneficial in the sense to add another working group meeting in there, and we can look at the capital needs, operating budget, the levy, all of that information, and give us some time to play with some of those numbers.
And maybe we'll have some more information from the state at that time.
And usually that's in November, then, when they start coming with their projections?
The big projection is November for the state.
And we don't actually certify until December, so we can always go down.
And we have to have the meeting before December 15th, right? Is that what it is?
Before December 30th. It used to be mid-December, and now they've...
They moved it now? Okay. Always behind. All right.
Do you need to have the council sit?
Mr. Johnson, that's at the public hearing?
Okay.
Yeah. December 17th.
Yeah. Yeah. So we should, with the second part of the motion, to, a separate motion for the staff recommendation, this hearing to be scheduled for December 17th at 6:00 PM at City Hall. Can we get a motion to, to move? Okay. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. All right. Did I miss anything now? No. All right, Craig, let's talk about some animals.
Yeah. So revisiting the dog kennel situation, been a discussion point for a little while now. I was approached by actually three different people, one outside the city limits, another one within the city, that didn't maybe have the means or facilities for what is being proposed or what's needed for kenneling or impounding dogs. A third party said they have the perfect setup, so tried to meet up with Colleen and do everything to work it out so we can both see it. But it, it worked, so I went over and visited with this individual. They do have an indoor facility for the animals. That does lead to an outdoor run or availability for outdoor exercise, so it meets some of the requirements. The only area that I see is probably a limitation, is there's no heat within this current building. There's your outdoor run or access to an outdoor run. And some of the conversation I did have is maybe having a divider to allow up to two animals at a time in the event that there are two at a time in there, or they don't get along real well and we can separate them. So I think with this property here, it's probably our best option to keep it as local. They're right off of, or they're right by I-94, so it is here in town. It would be a benefit for our officers as far as, like I said, if we do pick something up, we can get it right here in town as opposed to going outside the city or having to travel real far distances. The property owner, his wife was a animal breeder, a dog breeder for about 25 years. His life was growing up on farms, those sorts of things. So he's familiar with the dogs and all sorts of things. So I don't see there being any issues as far as handling the animals and any of those sorts of things. The biggest area we were going to be working on and looking into if the council approves this idea is then release liability to the city, any contract that we want to enter into with this individual duration contract, and any fees that they would like to then charge for housing the animals. I, my opinion is there shouldn't be a completely volunteer situation for these individuals, because they'll still be going out checking the animals, and still be feeding the animals, cleaning, sanitizing, all those sorts of things. So I believe their time is worth something. I don't know, it's gonna be a money-making endeavor, and it doesn't sound as though that's their intention. But I do believe they deserve something for any of this, especially if it is taking it off the city staff to follow through with this. So kind of what we're looking, like I said, looking at right now, there is, I think there's a picture of the outdoor run, at least that I gave to Colleen. I don't know if it's in the blue in the slide. But, yeah, so basically on the other side of the trees where the animals would be able to go in and out. Like I said, it is by I-94, so some of the noise issues, if there wasn't any barking related to it, would be semi-muted or semi-less of an issue just because of freeway noise in general. But we could address those in the future as well, so if that is an issue.
Now, did you, and maybe you haven't gotten that part, what are you thinking, a monthly contract or a contract per use, or a payment per use?
I would say, well, I think from what the discussion that we had, or at least in my thought process, it would be that it's a contract for their services and that they'd be paid on a, a daily housing basis. But when an animal is there, we don't necessarily pay them a fee just to be a facility.
They'll need a little something to keep some heat in there in the winter, even though they maybe don't have an animal. But, you know, so that it's ready to go, you guys bring something.
Or if it's a simple flip of the switch, an electric heater or something, some of that.
Right. No point in heating something if there's nothing in it at all.
They don't have water directly in that facility, but they do have water available for us. So it won't be that big of a deal if we bring one in late in the evening and put water down.
I think that's a great solution.
I agree.
Yeah. Very open for us, you know, to be on this property, doing all those sorts of things.
Keeps you guys in town, run a dog to Alexandria or something, you know?
Yeah. The only thing we would have to decide is how many days, because after five or six days, according to state statute, then you can, if nobody claims a dog within five or six days, then it needs to probably go someplace else. And then at that point, it could go up to Alexandria.
Shelter or...
Right.
Can you euthanize if you need to, or after a certain amount of time?
Yeah. After the five days, the law does allow for euthanization. It basically allows that it can be, it can leave whatever facility it's at and be dealt with whatever.
You gotta leave that option on the table. You just never know what you...
Yeah. If it's options running to a shelter or if it's euthanization, then those options are open for them.
All right.
And I guess, and maybe it's Alexandria, they have rescue shelters that will take, take these animals in and then try to get homes.
Right.
Yep.
All right.
And that's at no cost? They take, if we bring it up down?
There's a cost. I mean, we'd have to pay them.
Oh, okay, to take the animal.
Yeah.
Right.
And some of the direction that we've had with our officers, since we've gone to having no kennels, that city citations or ordinance violations for the allowing the is that city citations or ordinance violations for the allowing the dog run at large or license violation, we're a lot less lenient now since we do have to put a lot... Should say a lot more work, but we are putting more work into it. Instead of just dropping them off at the, you know, what was the vet clinic or whatever, walking away, like, don't figure it all out kind of thing. It has now been citations will be issued, so those are minimum fifty dollars, and they climb from there. So, my opinion would be, and it'd be up to the officer to decide if it's warranted or not, but we would work towards more of those issues or more of those solutions as opposed to just dropping them off at the facility and let us know when they leave kind of thing.
Well, I think if there's any way we can work on some sort of an agreement with these folks, and it sounds like they're receptive, this is our best plan. It sounds like they're caring compassion individuals. They're not chasing all over the world with, you know, a stinky wet dog in the back of their car, you know, so...
Do you want a motion to go further with this?
We just need direction at this point.
Yeah, what kind of direction do you need? Come up with a contract, come up with daily rates and stuff?
Yeah, we'll bring it back to you guys next month.
Great. I think we got a consensus, so let's get it done.
All right, very good, thank you.
Thank you, Chief, for all the hard work on this. All right, new business resolution number twenty twenty dash forty-eight, twenty twenty debt service balance transfer of the 2011 GO improvements bond.
Yeah, so in February this year, we paid off the 2011 GO bond. So, we do have a surplus balance in that account. So, the resolution before you is to transfer that remaining cash balance to our 2013 debt service fund.
How much is... What is the balance, do you know?
It is approximately sixty-five thousand.
Okay, and that has to be used toward debt?
So, that will be put towards that bond, and that has been built into the debt service schedule and how we plan to levy for those. And then, when that bond is paid off, then we can transfer that money.
Okay.
And that 2013, that's a public safety building?
That's the fire and ambulance.
Okay, yep.
Okay. So, can I get a motion approved?
So move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. We're on the informational items, utilities, commission, meeting minutes, schools and conferences. I had no questions on that. Anybody have any other questions? Can I get a motion to adjourn? Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, me and adjourned.